Would you please start off with a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. McIrvin.
Here.
Ms. Switche.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. As everybody knows, there's a special event occurring this evening, so that's why we have some standing room only people in the background. I'd like to ask everybody to rise for the presentation of the colors by the Renton Police Department Honor Guard. Please repeat after me. I, Ed Van Bailey.
Aye, Ed Van Bailey.
Affirm that I possess all of the qualifications.
Affirm that I possess all of the qualifications.
Prescribed in the Renton Municipal Code.
Prescribed in the Renton Municipal Code.
For the position of Chief of Police.
For the position of Chief of Police.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Renton.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Renton.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I would bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against enemies foreign and domestic.
And defend them against enemies foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a peace officer.
That I will faithfully.
Partially.
And impartially discharge the duties.
It is a little long.
Of a police officer.
And that I will faithfully conduct myself as Chief of Police of the Renton Police Department.
And I will faithfully conduct myself as Chief of Police of the Renton Police Department.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, Ed.
Thank you, sir.
The audience may be seated. Uniform members of the department, please remain standing and follow commands. Uniform members, Honor Guard. Present. Order. Uniform members, at ease. Thank you. Honor Guard. Present.
Thank you, Honor Guard. Thank you, members. Just a few words that I have to say. I timed this, and it should only take about 25 minutes. Maybe half that. All right. Thank you, Council, President Prince, Mayor Law, and Council members. Before we begin, I would like to give a special thank you to some people who made this all possible. Mayor Dennis Law, sir, thank you for your support, belief, and trust in me. The challenges with this opportunity are great and constant. As great as they are, I feel our effort, progress, and success will be even greater. To the council, your decision to support me as your chief is more than appreciated. In the climate of today, law enforcement agencies are working hard to build trust and transparency with their communities. Some do it because they have to; Renton does it because we want to. Your faith in me is not lost nor taken for granted. You have selected someone from the community, and time you will see, like you, I put the safety and security of our citizens, our families, above all else. Thank you. To my new best friends, the city administrators. Bob, Jan, Kelly, Chip, Greg, Preedy, Shane, and Ellen. Your support in my selection and appointment was very much appreciated. Renton's success is the result of those groups and individuals already mentioned, but is also in large part the result of your professionalism, dedication, and your competency. I am honored to sit next to each of you at the table and assist in maintaining Renton's status as the best city in King County. Thank you. Let me begin by saying that I am more than honored to be serving as your police chief. I am so very fortunate to have the opportunity this evening to share this very special event with my family, friends, and members of this community. Most of my family and friends are with us tonight, and I would like to bring special attention to one: my mother, Joanne Van Bailey. My parents moved to Renton in the early 1960s. Originally from West Virginia, they stopped here after my mother and father both received jobs in the area. My father with UNIVAC and my mother with this oddly wagon-shaped wheeled hospital called Valley Medical, where she served as a registered nurse. I'm the youngest of three boys. My mother worked at the hospital pulling a graveyard shift so that she could be with us in the morning and for dinner each night. While the boys were at school, she slept. My brothers and I find it hard trying to remember time when Mom wasn't there with us in the morning or making dinner every single night. I'm so glad she is here to see what all that hard work, patience, and sacrifice created. Thank you, Mom, I love you. I immensely appreciate the opportunity that has been afforded me to serve as the Chief of the Renton Police Department. I am fully committed to giving everything I have to this department, the amazing men and women under my command, and the residents of this city I call home. I have been very fortunate in my life to be raised in this great city. I have had many great moments here, some I can share and maybe a few that I shouldn't. My junior year of high school, my friend and I decided to do a government paper on the Renton Police Department. There were a small piece of our local government, and the profession was being highlighted by this amazing new TV series called Cops. To say I was hooked on the police profession is an understatement. I completed my paper, which if I had to guess was almost certain and astounding at average or a tad below, but I found what I thought for sure would be my career. That summer, I began working with the City of Renton. I worked for the Parks Department at Coulon Beach. I was given a yellow five-gallon bucket and received three intense minutes of instructions on the proper way to pull weeds from the tree beds. Maybe it was two minutes. I continued to work for the Parks Department in a part-time status over the next seven years. During breaks from school in the military, I was always welcomed by the full-time staff there and developed many great relationships that continue today. Picking to work for Renton was not a mistake. While working in the Parks Department, I would occasionally see the police department drive through the park. I was impressed by the uniform, the outdoors, and the fact that they solved problems. What kind of problems, I wouldn't truly understand until I actually became an officer. Like the time I was dispatched to a house to remove a raccoon that someone let in their kitchen. Ah, police work. Still too young to join, I decided to do everything I could to give me the best chance of becoming an officer in Renton. I went to college to get a degree in law and justice. I knew a degree was not needed, but felt it would give me an advantage over other candidates. I joined the Army. This would teach me discipline, pay for college, and perhaps give me a skill other than law enforcement. I graduated from college, and there was an immediate opening in the Renton Parks Department. I was 23, and I felt I could spend some more time in the pressure cooker that was Coulon Beach. I applied for and received the job with the Parks. Maybe a year later, while sitting in the maintenance shop, I observed a Renton Police car driving through the park. I always enjoyed seeing Renton PD drive through. It was still my goal, I just wasn't sure if I was ready. As the patrol car drove out of the park, I looked at the driver, and the driver's seat of the patrol car was someone I knew. I knew this individual. In high school, he was a very good friend of my brother Max. It was Jeff Harden. He's here tonight. If Jeff could do it, I should do it, and I should do it now.
Jeff, you get the next five minutes.
Almost done. Eight months later, I was sitting in Chief Gary Anderson's office. He was flanked by Deputy Chief Don Person and Commander Dennis Gerber. Chief Anderson said at that time, "Renton Police were not average; they were above average." Boy, was he right. From day one, the cast of characters I met in the department impressed me. It is unfair for me to tell stories as most of them probably wouldn't remember, but as a young officer, seeing the inner workings of the PD, I was soaking it all in. Chief Kevin Milosevic was a commander at the time. He was the first commander I met and immediately impressed me. He was kind, articulate, and took the time to describe the Investigations Division to a rookie. I remember thinking he was a quality person. I never would have imagined he would change my life when he appointed me Deputy Chief 15 years later. Thanks, Chief. Thank you for the support, the guidance, and the friendship. I fully recognize that the position of Police Chief incorporates so much more than simply acting as an agency head. With this position comes a great deal of responsibility to the agency and to the community. There are simple and evident expectations associated with this position, including such responsibilities as analyzing police issues within the city, formulating policies and rules within the organization, and overseeing that the laws of the state are administered and enforced impartially and fairly by our officers. While Police Chiefs set the mission statement for the agency, it is the personnel that work for the agency that set the standard. Renton has the finest. The position of police officer has certainly changed over the last couple of decades, and so have the expectations of the public. The amount of new laws, directives, and guidelines to follow and abide by has increased dramatically over the years. The profession has gotten more complex. In addition, technology and transparency are at the forefront of most police agencies. Our agency will embrace this technology and continue to research and utilize new tools to combat crime and serve the public. Although the law enforcement job is very rewarding at times, there are those times that it can be very difficult on those that wear the uniform. Besides the common physical stressors of shift work and requirements to work holidays or major events, there are emotional stressors resulting from incidents, many of us first responders here in this room, which we never had to experience. Unfortunately, oftentimes, these stressors take its toll on families of first responders as well. No matter how dangerous a situation may be or what they may face, members of law enforcement are expected to handle it professionally and accordingly. In those critical incidents, whether it's life-saving or possibly life-giving, I am confident that Renton officers know what is exactly expected of them and will not hesitate one second to do what may be necessary, no matter what threat they face or the effects it may have on them personally. I've seen each of them do it. Like with most organizations, though, the most important asset and component are the people you have working for and, more importantly, with you. I've worked directly with most of the officers in our Renton throughout my career in different capacities. Not only are these officers trained, skilled, and very capable in their responsibilities, but they understand the principles of law enforcement. I want to steal a page from Chief Milo's book. He used this quite often. The principles of law enforcement have been around since the beginning of policing in 1829. With the inventor of modern policing, Sir Robert Peel, most of the nine principles he created can be summed up in just one. Police at all times should maintain a relationship with the public that gives reality to the historic tradition that the police are the public and the public are the police. The police being the only members of the public who are to give full-time attention to duties which are incumbent on every citizen in the interests of community welfare and existence. These nine principles and the one quoted eventually transformed into the simplified role of what is expected of law enforcement: protect and serve. It is our relationship with the community, the businesses, the schools, and the entire fabric of Renton, which is always our top concern. I believe we have done a great job over the years forming these important relationships under the leadership of Chief Milosevic. This is something that we will continue to strive upon. To wrap this up, and before the cake dries out, I want to make you aware of our commitments. We will continue to be vigilant and proactive in locking up people who break the law, especially those people who victimize others. We will continue to show compassion and empathy to individuals who are in need and have called us for help or assistance, and will either provide them assistance or get them help that they need. We will continue to strive for new ways to improve on how we can better serve the needs of this great community. I will continue to pledge my service, time, and effort in taking care of the men and women of the department, who will be the main effort of the commitments I mentioned, and their families. I truly love and respect each and every member of the Renton Police Department. With your support and guidance, you have created the finest law enforcement agency in the region. This is not just something I believe or say, it is proven. We are reaching staffing levels that surpass our neighboring agencies. This is a result of your support with the Lateral Officer Bonus and Take Home Car Program. Both of these programs are being developed and attempted throughout the state. Renton was the first. We lead in our efforts of technology by use of UAV drone and parking enforcement vehicles. Our detectives are often applauded by Valley agencies as they lead some of the toughest investigations when it comes to officer-involved incidents. Our front counter handles thousands of records requests each year with minimal staffing, additional duties, and they still answer the phone with an enthusiastic, "Good morning, Renton Police, how can I help you?" Their success and talent is not lost on me, and it is not because of me. It was encouraged and supported by all of us: council, mayor, citizens. I will do my best, and then a little more, to take care of these amazing people who take care of some amazing people: the community of Renton. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay, one, two, and three, one more. One, two. Perfect. Thank you.
We can't follow a presentation of that magnitude with a public hearing, so if the council has no objections, I'd like to recommend we recess for 15 minutes to go to the reception.
Mr. Mayor, so moved?
It's moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we recess for 15 minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. This meeting is now called back to order. Would you please do a roll call?
Okay, Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. McIrvin.
Here.
Ms. Switche.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. Well, next is a riveting public hearing. I'm sorry, Cliff, this is very important, public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm Cliff Long from Community and Economic Development, and I'm here tonight to present recommendations for the use of our community development block grant funds. I will address plans for the upcoming 2019 funding cycle as well as reprioritizing funds remaining from the 2018 and 2016 program years. The City of Renton receives an annual allotment of CDBG funds through an agreement with King County. These funds originate from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and provide a flexible tool for funding community development needs. We estimate that the 2019 allotment will be the same as the 2018 figure at $697,888. From that total, the city must fund the human service set-asides in partnership with King County as well as the administration costs of the program. That leaves the city $334,986 in discretionary funding expected in 2019. We recommend that these monies be used for public facilities and improvement in a new downtown streetscape improvement program. This will allow us to upgrade lighting, sidewalks, landscape, and essential streetscape furnishings as envisioned in the Civic Core Plan and in the Streetscape Design Guide adopted by council. These improvements will be targeted within an area of downtown in South Renton that qualifies as an area-wide benefit for low- and moderate-income persons. The map is outlined in yellow. With the intersection improvements slated for Wells and Williams in Second and Third, we believe these enhancements will be well timed to improve pedestrian safety and amenities downtown. However, as a contingent use of the 2019 funds, should circumstances not allow full expenditure of the monies for streetscape, we recommend that the remainder be dedicated for human service needs in the city's housing program. We are proposing that the Downtown Streetscape Improvement Program be a multi-year phased project moving forward. Since the needs of the project are larger than can be solely funded with the 2019 monies, we recommend modifying the 2018 action plan to add those funds into the program. We further recommend that the remainder of the 2016 funds be added as well through the amendment of our 2016 action plan. So, following our public hearing tonight, we request that council approve a committee report recommending concurrence with the staff recommendation and any proposed changes directed by council. Thank you, and I'm willing to stand for questions.
Thank you, Cliff. Council, have any questions? Okay, 'cause I know you've been briefed on all of this. Any correspondence, Jason?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this is a public hearing, but I have nobody signed up to address the council unless one of the department heads would like to come forward. What's a wish to the council?
Move we close the public hearing.
It's a move by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Cliff. We'll be having a committee report shortly.
Thank you.
Administrative report, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Good evening. Couple items. Preparation work has been completed, and structural repairs for Coulon Beach Bark are commencing on October 1st. Today, I'm sorry, during October and November, we'll see the first phase of the deck repair on the north side of Ivor's Restaurant, repairs of the north and south water walks, work on the trestle bridge, and repair work commencing on the boat launch area. The restaurant parking area east of Kid Valley will be partially closed off during the construction period for the contractor staging area. Repair activities will take a break for clam lights on November 30th for the grand opening and then the entire month of December. And then, lastly, Coffee with a Cup returns. The mission of Coffee with a Cup is to break with a cop. Coffee with a cup is pretty regular. To make it special, we have for a police officer every now and then. It's there to break down barriers between police officers and the citizens they serve by removing agendas and allowing opportunities to ask questions, voice concerns, and just get to know your local Renton Police Officer. That's it.
Thank you, Bob, and we're really pleased that after all that training, they're drinking their coffee from cups now. Moving on to audience comments, Howard McComber.
I'm gonna work the machine again. I'm supposed to be pushing the blue. Try the green. One more time. One more time.
I think we're down to one person now that knows how to run that thing, and that's Jason.
We got it. There. All right. Great, you've seen this before, and if you go around City Hall here, you'll see it again. I'm Howard McComber. I live in the City of Renton. All of you, I emailed you a little poster, and I gave you a copy tonight, but I thought more for the listening audience and for the folks who keep track of this.
Howard, are you close to the microphone?
Okay, I'm gonna have to run back and forth between you. Is this better?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, what we're pushing right now is for our charity, which is Reach. Reach is for the very lowest level of good people in the City of Renton. These are folks who are in great trouble and crisis. We have three major areas where we provide service. Number one, which is our flagship, is the Center of Hope downstairs. We are very thankful that the City of Renton has provided us with the opportunity to serve that, with that facility down there. It is designed to be a safe haven for women who are having a problem with domestic abuse. Unfortunately, that's a big problem in every city. It's sad, but it's true. And there needs to be a place of refuge where a woman can go when she is threatened and feels unsafe. And this is very real unsafe. I talked with the people downstairs, with Tina and others, to try to get a good handle, but basically, one-third of all the women have an occasion where they're abused, and that's awful. But the big thing is to have someplace where they can go that's safe. And Renton has that. We have it downstairs. We have a staff that are very good, and they work with these people. We have them down there now. I took some pictures, which you'll see in just a second. Let me just run some quick pictures here. We don't have, we don't have pictures of the ladies because that would be a security problem. So, I took some quick shots of our facility. This is, this is the wood door. There's another door that's much more forbidden when you come in, but this is, this is where you started, the center of Reach. It's down the hall. What we did is we took a jail, which looked like a jail and felt like a jail, steel and concrete and a key. The ladies got a hold of it and did some really wonderful things, to soften it up, to make it a safe place and a place that would feel good for them. So, there's some quick shots going in the hall. And this is, this is Tizzie. That's the lady who is kind of running the show down there. She's doing a beautiful job. She has her heart in it. She's doing a lot of good for people. And these people need it the worst way. More than anything else, they need the feeling of compassion, and they need a feeling of friendship, and they need a feeling of safety. And in the City of Renton, we have that. And we have it because you folks have always fostered helping the people at the very bottom of the table. This is important, and we're done. She is. This is a picture of the rest of the staff. Now, Tizzie's there. The two ladies you see close to the one in green and one next to her, those two ladies handled the children's shelter over at Harambe, because we can't have people in the city hall at night. Harambe, which is one of our churches that works with us, provides a place for about 50-plus people. Their ticket to get in is a child. We have a problem everywhere in King County and other places with children out in the weather at night. This is not out in the weather. If you go over there, and I invite you all to come, it has a nice feeling. It's warm and gentle. Now, it's not plush. It used to be the Eagles Club. It's still kind of the Eagles Club. It's the Eagles Club, it's a mission church. And at night, instead of having folding chairs down for church services, those are all gone, and we lay out mats on the floor, wall-to-wall mats and sleeping bedding and whatnot. But it's a safe place where the, where the children and their mothers can be, and there's restrooms there, which is so important. Very hard to live without a restroom, especially if you have little kids. We have those things, so it's the minimal level that you can have and still have it good, but there's a wonderful feeling there. Those ladies that you see make it warm. They're kind of like mamas. Show up, they're good. They're providing, just super wonderful, warm feeling. And we have that, and I'm sorry, we have that because you folks do it, because you support us, because we all work together in this town to win. And so, I won't go through the rest of my pictures. People can see those, and you know what they look like. But these people need your help, not as a city, except you always give help in your own way, but to go to the people that you know, the corporate people and the others, and say, "Come on down and help Reach." There isn't anybody at Reach that doesn't need help, and the help is going to be appreciated, and it's important. I'll let that go. One last shot of this before it disappear, and that's on. I'll let that go. One last shot of this before it disappear, and that's on the eighteenth. We can get everything. If you go to reachrenton, this little thing right here, reachrenton.org and Google, that can put anybody in touch with what we take. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Howard. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have eighteen items for council consideration. Are there any items that council might like pulled for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item M and N.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I moved that the consent agenda be adopted minus items M and N.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman that council concur with the consent agenda minus items M and N. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Both M and N are requests from the Police Department to hire lateral police officers at step E, and we, as a council, all know that we save about $100,000 per officers that we can get as a lateral entry, plus the time that it takes to get them here, and we don't want to hold that hiring up at all, so with that, I move the council concurring the recommendation of item M and N.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni that council approve items M and N of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Moved by Don Person, second by Mr. Corman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't care.
Oh, you were. You're right. You're absolutely right. It was moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman that items M and N of the consent agenda be approved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Sorry about that.
A long night. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Committee of the Whole has a committee report.
Okay, Committee of the Whole Committee Report, 2019 Community Development Block Grant Funds. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the following staff recommendations. Approve the city's acceptance of estimated 2018 community development block grant funds, CDBG funds, of $697,888 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development via joint agreement with King County, including the following contractual set-asides per the joint agreement: County Administration, $69,789; County Capital Administration, $13,958; Housing Stability Program, $34,894; and King County Housing Repair Program of $174,472. Of the remaining $404,775, allocate $69,789 or the maximum allowable amount for planning and administration, leaving a discretionary balance of $334,986. For the discretionary balance of 2019 CDBG funding, allocate the full amount to the Downtown Streetscape Improvement Program for the downtown south Renton area. Adopt the recommended CDBG 2019 contingency plan as follows. Any increases in entitlement or recaptured funds will go to the Downtown Streetscape Program. Any decrease in entitlement will decrease the amount to the Downtown Streetscape Program. Program income will be allocated to healthy housing. Any 2019 Downtown Streetscape Program funds not under contract by December 31st, 2019, will be recaptured and reallocated to the Healthy Housing Program. Modify the CDBG 2016 and 2018 action plans as follows. Use $76,320 of Project C16753 Renton Facade Improvement Program. $2016 to fund the final additional scope for the Cortana Building, including the cost for environmental review and Davis Bacon compliance. The remaining funds in C16753, which is $316,155.77, will be used to create the Renton Downtown Streetscape Improvement Project, and then cancel the 2018 project, C18352 Renton Burnett Sidewalk Improvements Project, and move the $334,986 of 2018 CDBG funds to the new Renton Downtown Streetscape Improvement Project. Total project funds equals $651,141.77. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the council concur with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni that council concur with the Committee of the Whole report. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. This is just another example of the significant contribution that the city has been putting into the revitalization of the downtown, so good job, Cliff. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Mr. Corman?
Um...
Unfinished business.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee has a couple of committee reports.
Okay, Planning and Development Committee Report, Adoption of the National Electrical Code 2017 Edition. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff recommendation to adopt the amendments to RMC 4-5 Renton Municipal Code, references to the National Electrical Code. The Planning and Development Committee further recommend that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay. The next committee report is the Housing Opportunity Fund Grant Award to the Homestead Community Land Trust. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in staff's recommendation to approve a $25,000 award from the Housing Opportunity Fund to Homestead Community Land Trust to help support the development and construction of the Sunset Crest Townhomes to provide twelve affordable home ownership units in the Sunset area. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Witche?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Okay. Moving on to legislation, we have one ordinance this evening.
Okay, the ordinance is regarding the adoption of the 2017 National Electrical Code. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4560A2 and 4570C3 of the Renton Municipal Code by updating the Construction Administrative Code to apply to the 2017 National Electrical Code, updating the reference to the National Electric Code and the Fire Code to be consistent with the Construction Administrative Code and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Committee of the Whole will be meeting next Monday at 5:00 p.m. in council chambers. We have one item on the agenda: 2019-2020 Budget, Department Presentation, and Council Deliberations. We have the Executive Department, the Public Works Department, and the Community and Economic Development Department, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to announce that the Public Safety Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, October 8th, is canceled.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McIrvin.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Witche?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Person?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee is going to meet next Monday.
Well, you didn't do any work this week, so now you're going to get your work cut out next week.
Oh, but I've already read seventy-seven pages of vouchers for next week. Just... Anyway, it'll be 3:00 p.m. in the council conference room on Monday, October 8th. There are eight items. Number one is a utility leak adjustment for R2R, a utility leak adjustment for Henry Friedman. Number three is HMA and Envision RX Contract Renewal. Four is Kaiser Permanent Contract Renewal. Number five is Sunset Neighborhood Park Phase II Grant. Six is Teasdale Park Playground Replacement. Number seven is vouchers, and number eight is emerging issues in finance, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. What's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.